Like to call the meeting in order. Mr. Tippett, you call the roll please.
David Burris.
Burris.
Wes Bryne.
President.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lucan.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Kaylin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, remember if you have a conflict of interest, please select the council and vote before any votes. Make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the February sixteenth, please.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the February sixteenth, councilman.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between, please.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between for one hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims and the two thousand twenty accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve current claims for thirty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents and two thousand twenty accounts payable for six thousand twenty-five dollars.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, see, I got a question on that two thousand twenty accounts payable. I got to think about that quite a bit. We actually held Mr. Heinger up finishing his job, so I guess I don't have a problem paying this man because, quite honestly, it really wasn't his fault that he couldn't finish the job. I've been kind of thinking about it. You know, at the last meeting, we was kind of talking about not paying. I didn't find fair to repay him and, you know, hold back four thousand, I guess, for paying Kurt Cos, but it's just my feelings.
I think John shared that with us at the last council meeting.
I guess I missed that.
Yep. Again, we're holding back the ten percent for paying to get the grass put back in the rest of the items, no?
Four thousand, yeah.
Correct.
Oh, I let him share the information. We held it up.
He did?
I guess I missed that, too. Anyhow.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit cards, please.
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claim for the amount of five thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. Present.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to our communications from the public. We have a number of folks who want to speak to us tonight, so I would ask to try to keep your comments around five minutes, and when you come up to address the council, name and where you're from, please.
So first, I take off real fast. Bart's not going to be here, and neither Vicarson is retired, so I talked to Bart today. And I also talked to John Emick. He is the head of the irrigation district out there. He kind of suggested maybe you, Mr. Mayor, him, and the head of the irrigation district maybe sit down, try to redo the contract, so that way it's contingent upon the correct elevation for water, so that way, because like this year, there's no way we would have ever gotten water. The elevation just isn't going to be there. And we, our contract is contingent on basically that elevation, so that is what John suggested to me, is maybe you, him, and Mark Walton can sit down, maybe try to redo the contracts, and that way in the future, if we are interested in receiving water, it might still be a possibility. Because Mark, or Bart's issue with the fee law was, was what we were doing was possibly going to make where we could never achieve water again, but anyhow, I'll leave it.
Okay. So let's scratch Mark.
Scratch basically eight. I spoke on behalf of.
Okay, I had it up to, prior to the meeting, an email conversation that John had with some folks to try to get a good understanding of this contract, and Wes should raise the concern that if we don't redo it, we may not be able to get it in the future. John, would you share your, what you found out with the council, please?
Your proclamation says we can get the contract back wherever we want to get the contract back with no additional cost to us at that time.
That's what John shared to me, saying, but being the way it's worded, it's you, John, and the board of presidents, the three that we have to get together to try to renegotiate. Because like I say, he was trying to make it where we wouldn't have to pay every year for no reason, for no longer, basically.
Okay. It's my understanding that the council chose not to redo because of the ongoing cost. Your understanding now is that there's the possibility to enter into an agreement where we would only pay if we actually used water?
If the elevation was correct, and that's, they determined that at a certain time, and that's where Mr. Emick said, if you guys sit down, we could maybe change some more.
All right. Well, then I need an indication from the council what you want me to do, because you didn't want to redo the contract. Do you want, well, I'm not sure how we have that. Do you want me to have that conversation with them, or do you feel that you're happy with your decision moving forward?
I don't know. I don't think it hurt to have a conversation with them, but that's a beautiful one.
All right, I'll get back to you on that. I'll sit down, and Wes will like sit down and talk with you some more, and John will sit down and have a conversation and see where we want to go with it, if the feeling is that, but we'll have that conversation.
Mayor, can you make a motion to table that to a different time?
We don't have any motion in front of us, sir. Now, this is just coming about from conversation or communication from the public.
Okay.
All right. Then John, Wes, David, Craig, lovely words. Let's move through there. Have the conversations, see where we want to go. Next communications from the public, Larry Pratt.
You hear me okay?
Larry, would you state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Larry Pratt. I live at three zero six Thompson Avenue here in Hot Springs. I am a full-blood Cheyenne. I have been a sun dancer.
Can the public hear?
Mike, what is? Everybody hear me okay?
I will see to your mom.
How's that?
Good.
Okay. I am a full-blood Cheyenne. I have been a sun dancer, and I've been to many sweat lodges and ceremonies in my lifetime. My ancestors have fought at Little Big Horn in Sand Creek in the Battle of Washington. That being said, it has come to my attention that a member of this council has referred to me as that Indian. I find that racial reference personally offensive and overall offensive to the Native American people as a whole. I consider such a statement from a council member unacceptable, but since the person that witnessed this was unwilling to sign a statement of what it was said, I can only state this concern as a member of the public. If that particular council member or any council member has an issue with me personally or as a member of this council, I invite you to speak to me face to face. Thank you for hearing my concern.
Don DeVries.
Hi. You want to know where I live, right? I'm Don DeVries, live at twenty-seven five twelve Todd Drive, near Valley, near town.
Think you need to get a little more up.
Did you take it out, sir? I was pretty close to that one.
Wait, wait, wait. Get back, get back.
This is maybe better?
Yes.
All right. I'm Don DeVries. I live at twenty-seven five twelve Todd Drive, near Hot Springs, but not in the city. I'm here representing the Friends of Wind Cave, and Friends groups all over the nation are important to a lot of the national parks because they do projects for the parks the parks sometimes can't do. This is an example of one of those projects. We have built in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we had the National Guard build one mile road on the east side of the park, leading into the Sampson Ranch, historic property there. It was a property that was bought by Wind Cave probably seven, eight, nine years ago. Besides building the road or funding the road, we have the South Dakota National Guard actually build it, but besides funding that, we've also been out there a few times since to do some seeding, a little bit of erosion control, and now the road is very, very close to done. But what we would like to do, and what Wind Cave would like us to do, is to get permission through federal legislation to let them do the work on that one mile of road, so we can spend our time and effort and the funds that we raise on projects inside the park. We're looking at some of the work at the Sampson Ranch to do some work rebuilding the house, maybe have an artist and residents out there sometime. We're working with the park on this. So really, what I'm asking for is a letter of support from the city for federal legislation allowing Wind Cave National Park to do work outside of the park property on this one mile of road. It's the only way of road that there is to get into the Sampson Ranch. In fact, to get in there, they've got to use this road with all their equipment and everything. Cool. Simple. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have recommended language for a letter of support?
I can get you recommended language.
I don't know if the mayor would like that, but I think there'd be help.
The mayor would love that.
I will furnish that for you, if you have permission to write it.
I'd be happy to. Is there any opposition from the council?
I'm here. That was my question, as well, with the exception of, did you want that letter to address some of the projects that you had stated within the letter that you presented to council?
I don't think it's going to help to have all the projects. We might state in there that we have done projects and we're looking forward to doing more, but the main part of this is just to allow the park to do work just outside of the park on this one mile of road.
I think you know.
That road, that road being two sixty-six?
Yes.
Okay. I have a little problem.
It makes sense. I agree.
In your, your letter here, Don, you had mentioned that you folks had raised nearly seventy-eight thousand dollars. Much time did it take you to raise that money?
It took us, well, about five years total, but we worked hard on it for about two years to get it raised, between two and three years.
That's amazing.
We're tired of the project.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. So give us a letter, and if you have it, sign it.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Has that, has that seed been planted with the commercial dollars?
Pardon me?
Has that, has that thought been passed on? Has it, has seed been planted already, or?
Seed's been planted in Washington, D.C., but now they're looking for some letters of support to go along with the legislation, to talk to the senators and representatives back there.
Now, are you going to also ask Custer? Tell him, Custer, do you have?
Yep. Custer City's being asked tonight. We've already got a letter of support from Custer County, because it's a county, it's not a county road, but it's out in the county that normally they would have responsibility for. We've gotten a letter from them.
Okay, good, good. So you got good support? Don, is there a timeframe you need this letter back to you?
Oh, within weeks is what I'd like.
Okay.
I'll get something to Bob, though.
Okay.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Before I, before I start, I'd like to say this with all due respect to the city council and staff. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city staff, and Hot Springs City Council.
Can you state?
My name is Dwayne Cruz.
Dwayne.
I am the property owner at two six zero five Doran Road in Ward Number Three. And I'm sorry, were you saying something? I got.
You answered the question.
Okay, there's a speaker right here in my ear. Okay. It has come to my attention that the city of Hot Springs had a discretionary tax rebate, which was in effect as of March nineteenth, twenty eighteen, as written in ordinance eleven eighty-seven, for new residential structures or renovations. This tax rebate opportunity was not brought to my attention by the city or provided to my builder during the construction process. If you state my builder was informed, I, as the property owner, was not. I just found out about this recently, about mid-January twenty twenty-one. There was no verbal or written notification to be made aware of. According to the process, a form was to be provided by the city to the builder or property owner during the permit and construction process, which was not. I've gone down to the Department of Equalization to discuss veteran tax benefits, as it was not brought to my attention about the tax rebate then, although I was not asking for the discretionary tax rebate at the time, so no fault to theirs to provide me the information. However, if all eligible work is to be approved prior to construction, why wasn't this brought to my attention as the property owner to be knowledgeable of the program, so I can seek more information to accept or deny this tax rebate? How can I decline or deny this opportunity if it wasn't brought to my attention? Why would I decline it? Why would it be hidden or concealed to the citizens of this community who would want to take advantage of this program? Wouldn't it make sense to incentivize the community while increasing values for our homes? In the end, it will generate increased tax revenue by the increased property values or increased local business sales due to project improvements. We began construction on our residence June twenty-third, twenty eighteen, a few months after the ordinance was approved. I understand there was turnover in leadership and city staff during my application process for the permitting, zoning, and construction. The city staff that has been through this process with me have done an outstanding job in assisting me and my family in building my retirement home, and for that, I'm truly appreciative. However, I, as a tax-paying citizen, should not be penalized for the lack of information the city was to have been transparent on. Transparency in all city actions should be clear to all citizens, no matter their income level, ethnicity, gender, status, religious background, or personal affiliations or relationships within the city. I am not stating I don't want to pay taxes. I'm saying, why are you, the city, hiding or concealing this opportunity for capable community members to build or remodel their homes or structures? I only have one more page. Why would I have to ask for this? Shouldn't the city provide this as part of the checklist for building permits? Yes, it's five years of tax rebate, but what about afterwards? What about the future tax revenue it will bring because of increased values? The ordinance had potential for community members to take advantage of and for the future of Hot Springs to grow. As we grow, our community benefits. There was a reason this ordinance was approved in the past. Why was it not known immediately after it was approved? There have been quite a few homes built or remodeled since the ordinance has passed. What about those property owners? Are you, as the city, going to terminate this ordinance and not be transparent? Whether we remodel a kitchen, add another bedroom or bathroom, or simply build a new home, the city of Hot Springs has a duty to inform its community of this opportunity. I understand that there's a lot of work to be done and to determine who all this has affected. Keep in mind that I, as a property owner, can redirect the tax rebate to other taxable items such as the water tax. I am requesting that you accept my letter and statement here as consideration in a retroactive approach to addressing the disservice and missed opportunity, so that I and the community can be afforded this opportunity to make good use of the ordinance passed by you, the city. Thank you for your time and consideration. I do have a copy here if you like.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. I have one minute.
Does anybody have any questions for Delancey?
Pending any questions, city council on your answer.
Did you apply for your permit yourself, or was it strictly the contractor?
Strictly the contractor. I was in Washington State in the process, flying back and forth monthly, working with my contractor to get my home built, and he advised me he was not aware of this, and I was not informed either.
Any other questions? Just a couple comments. Delancey, you and I have talked about this, and I would like to clarify, you had referenced hidden or concealed a couple times, and I've been through this, I've been here through the whole time, and I would disagree that the city did anything to hide or conceal this rebate. I will acknowledge we didn't do as much as we could or should to make it more apparent that it was there, so I'll accept that responsibility, but there isn't anything that I've seen from the folks that were in place at the time, the council was in place at the time, or anybody else where there was an intent to hide or conceal this. Other than that, we've had the conversations, and I told you that, why I voted the way that I did. Two requirements, that the work began after the ordinance went into effect, and that the property owner be aware that it was available. To your point, you can't decline something you're not even aware of. So those are the two requirements that I hope the council takes into consideration when they determine how they want to manage these rebates if they pass the ordinance tonight. And I do have a couple of questions for attorney when the motion comes up, when the ordinance comes up for a second.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
I had a constituent call me regarding this ordinance, and number one, they mentioned that on our, on our agenda, it would be nice if we would mark down what these ordinances are about, maybe to get, so that people know what we're going to be talking about a little better before the meetings. But as to this ordinance, he did not want it to be rescinded as well, because, as mentioned, the future tax abilities and improvements and increases down the road, and he stated, and I, maybe he clarified for me also, is that one of the reasons why we didn't want to, that we should discontinue it is because of lack of or loss of money to the city and being able to plan on our budget, not knowing what those losses are, but he explained that, and I don't know if I'll get this right even, that we maintain the taxes that we have going, it's just that we rebate on the future taxes that that will increase, and then five years down the road, we have all of the taxes increased, which would be to the benefit of the city. So there's that point, and then another point was made that, you know, I think the intention of that ordinance was to have people come in and renovate these older homes that they could, if they could afford these very expensive houses, that maybe they really didn't, we really didn't want the rebates on people that could afford the taxes like that, but the older homes, people living in older homes on fixed incomes, that we want those to be improved upon and give incentive for that, and to that effect, maybe we should be like rewriting or specifying within this ordinance that maybe homes that are thirty years old and older, or whatever limits we would want to put on that, if that is the intent that the ordinance was written for. But they didn't really want this ordinance to be rescinded.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would agree with that. I mean, I, I still see this as an incentive, because we're riding the real estate gravy train right now. It's not always going to be that way, so I, I think it's still an incentive to get people to do something. And maybe that's what it needs, maybe, maybe the ordinance needs revision in the wording, but I think that's the thing.
And I agree with Mr. Cruz on his assessment that he can't deny something he didn't know about, so the failure, in my eyes, in his instance at least, falls upon when the permits were obtained, that that information did not go forward as well to Mr. Cruz at that time, which is no doubtly on the, on the back of the city. Correct, sir.
I agree, but we can go back there. We have built the house since then, and asked them if they want to rebate it. We got all the permits.
Well, my question would be, was the same actions or lack of actions taken for those properties built, did they not get it at the time of permitting? They didn't know they should apply.
I agree, but if, if he didn't know, you know, nobody else knew about it, so do we go back and ask, did the building promote permits, ask those people if they want to apply for the rebate? It would be unfair to everybody, or put it in the paper?
You know, if we offered it, we should, it should apply.
I think it's a part of time. Is it possible to tweak what we have, so it does represent what we're actually going after, approving older commercial buildings and older homes as opposed to building new?
Certainly, we can table this. Do you want to go back to a committee?
Well, when it comes up as an agenda, I don't.
Yes, you do.
My understanding of it, it was supposed to have been a pre-approved situation, well, like Dwayne says, how, how is he going to get pre-approved if he didn't know about it? That, this all falls on someone that's doing the building permits, which to me, like.
Well, that's what I was thinking, Wes. Aren't the contractors supposed to be aware of this? I mean, if they're available to home, aren't they supposed to let the homeowner know this kind of thing? Yes, sir. Just asking, Wes, sir. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dwayne? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. On to personnel action.
Mr. Mayor?
Any other communications from the public?
Do you have any statements, please?
Is your statement in relation to this?
No.
Okay. Any other communications from the public, so that we do hear that? All right, come on up, please. So is that a new bag on the microphone?
Yes.
All right.
My name's Ron Eastep. I live in Keystone. I was born and raised here. And I just want to inform the council that it's my intention to possibly buy the West Oak building. And I'd like to see the inside. That's the only thing I haven't done to educate myself on what the situation is. And so I just wanted to make sure you do that. So if there's a conversation that you want to have, you can raise your questions amongst yourselves. And I look forward to seeing the building. And I look forward to working with you. And I've had a conversation with Mr. Johnson. We've been communicating and asked a lot of people about the condition of the building. So anyway, I just thought it would be prudent to inform you.
Can you repeat your last name, please?
Ron Eastep. It's E-A-S-T-E-P.
You understand we have a road project that is the main jeopardizing issue.
Thanks to Deborah Johnston. I have been kind of educated by some of the paperwork that she's had. So and there'll be more questions. And I look forward to talking to John and Scott and finding out what the situation is if I can go forward doing.
Have you talked to the owners of the building yet, Ron?
Yeah.
Oh, you've talked with John then about getting access to the building?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do tomorrow, if it's possible.
Okay.
And Bob, I have to apologize. When we had meeting over here, I didn't recognize you. You're kind of like fine line. You've just gotten better looking all this time.
Well, that's not.
It must have been, it kind of might have been that gray hair. And I haven't seen you since high school, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I apologize.
No, that's fine. And to Deborah's point, the city needs to make a decision about what they're going to do with this building. In the request for proposal, the option to stabilize the building, the west wall, a certain part of that option. We have received a request for proposals.
Oh, yeah.
And this council's ready to make a decision. But as Deborah said, it's hinging on the fact that the state, if they don't have, a licensed engineer that signs off on whatever the plan is to stabilize that building, it will jeopardize the road project going forward. It will be delayed. They need to have an answer. This can be something that we keep kicking down the road.
Oh, I realize that. And I talked to Socker. And he was saying that there was going to be a little delay there, so I figured it might be a window, window of opportunity.
Well, Rich, it's certainly a good one with the state to talk to. Well, thank you for that.
Yeah. So thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Any other communications from the public?
I'm Rich Holstead. I live at 233 Lincoln Avenue. Just to kind of go along with the ordinance on the rebate, I have talked to some of you today. It works out to be about $650 per $100,000 valuation. So if somebody did an addition on their house, it was a $100,000 addition. Their taxes went up $100,000 appraised value. They would pay an extra $650 a year in taxes on the 20, what you paid 2020, which was the 2019 tax bill. That does vary a little bit every year, but that's the dollar figure. I think it's a good incentive thing. I hate to see you guys just throw it away and then two years from now, you're having a conversation on why that ever went away if things change. So I'd like you to at least take a chance to revisit it and look at it. If you need to tweak it, maybe you need to raise the dollar value. It's like $5,000 improvement. That doesn't hardly put a deck on a house anymore at today's prices. So just give us some consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Takes us on to personnel action.
Mayor, I have a notice I'd like to read to the council.
All right.
Friday afternoon, we received from the Mule Deer Foundation written notice that they'd like to conduct a raffle at their fundraising event in Hot Springs. The purpose of the foundation is to ensure conservation of mule deer, black-tailed deer, and their habitat. They'll be hosting a large gun raffle, as well as a few other single raffles, a silent auction, and a membership drive. It's free to attend the event and is open to the public. It's scheduled for March 16, 2021, and will be held at the American Legion in Hot Springs. Doors will open at four for remote participants to make raffle entries. So that serves as council's notice of the raffle. I have the full letter if anyone's interested.
Any questions about that? All right. Personnel actions. Personnel actions, A through D. Can I get a motion to close this group, please? I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through D. Second motion. Discussion.
On personnel C, I guess I'd like to know, is this, have they completed their testing?
He was gone today for testing. I'm not sure if it's complete.
I don't have that idea.
I didn't speak to him again later today, but I knew he was testing today.
I guess I got a question. Why would we run him up to 100%?
Which policy is based on anniversary case?
What was the last person that had this job? What they thought about that?
How does that change?
I'd like to break out and see how to vote on the rest of them.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A, B, and D?
I'd make that motion.
Second. Discussion.
So we're pulling it out before?
Vote on separately. Second.
And the answer for the testing was, you don't know that.
He was testing today. We have a procedure on stage. He is actively working on his test day.
He's been actively working on it.
He's a pretty busy guy. He wanted to make sure and study for it so he could get it right and get it done. So he's a very, very busy man. We put a lot on his shoulders. I think he certainly earns his keep around this town.
If the personnel action is based on longevity, then why are we altering my motion? I don't necessarily, I understand where you're coming from, Wes, but if the personnel action is per the policy, then I don't want to amend my motion.
And the reason that I asked to amend it was because I missed that you had made a motion. So it was incorrect for me to ask for your motion when one of our are going to make.
Okay.
Ted, we have a second on it?
Yes.
All right. So then the motion is to approve personnel actions A through D. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So Craig and Wes, so the motion passes. Takes us on to ordinance. His first ordinance is the second reading of ordinance 1226. That's the ordinance that would repeal the tax rebates.
I would like to make a motion to table the second reading of the ordinance 1226 and ordinance repealing the following sections of Title III Administration, Chapter 35 Economic Development, Business Improvement, Subchapter Discretionary Tax Formula Rebate, 35 dot 15 dash 35 dot 18.
No, second motion. Discussion.
Yeah, I was told today that the Land and Zoning actually wanted to keep this in place.
My recollection is we had this same general discussion at the first reading of this ordinance. And the first reading passed unanimously.
Well, I just heard that today. The Land and Zoning actually, they didn't want to repeal it, so. Sharing that information.
Any other questions?
Are we tabling this for information? And to take a look at?
At potential revisions?
Okay.
Are we in discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess part of my thought is we could go ahead and repeal the ordinance as stated. And there's nothing that stops us to go ahead and rewrite a new ordinance that says what it needs to say to accomplish what we truly want to accomplish with such an ordinance because this has so much in it that needs fixed. A revision would be almost a total rewrite. So that's why I don't know that it's a problem of going ahead and reviewing this as written and then just starting over.
It won't get dropped if we do it that way?
There's no guarantee.
It's up to us.
It's up to us.
We're going to have all the same challenges ahead of us regarding what's, what we're going to have to do while this ordinance was in effect. Those questions will not go away. We're still going to have to address them one by one. But as far as going forward, if we want to do this, then let's build something that that addresses what we as a city need. Because I think when this was originally generated, we were trying to piggyback on top of what the county was doing. Is that correct? The county had a similar tax rebate that we were trying to.
It's existed for a long time.
That it existed for a long time, and we were trying to put some language in that went along with that. And I'm not sure.
We tried to write it like a discretionary rather than a rebate program, I think. The commis is commercial, not residential. Right.
Correct. My feeling is we shouldn't have to rewrite it. We've got an ordinance in place. And I feel if we have to tweak whatever it is to tweak, we should do that. But we need to give every opportunity to those in the past that did not know about this particular rebate, the opportunity to still be able to utilize that. And yet, I'm afraid, as Deborah mentioned, if we would not take this, and we may not take it back.
I agree.
We may not be here as council the next time it comes around to be revisited and voted on. I would say keep it in place, table it, write it the way we would write it, the language it needs to be in there. Leave it as it is and vote on it at that time.
Have you read the ordinance as it exists? Because right now, the ordinance is written as a 0% rebate. That means no rebate. As it's written, it's poorly written. It doesn't read correctly. It doesn't do the things we intended for it to do. It needs to be.
It has no value.
Revised. It's not.
I'm all for revision. I'm all for revision. I'm happy with that. And I guess part of my concern with holding on to it and revising it is then every construction project we have between now and revision, we're going to have to deal with the way it's currently written.
I'm no lawyer, but I'm going to guess we're done of anyway.
So if we vacate it tonight or in 20 days, it's gone. So what we're going to have from the time it was implemented until it's vacated, we're going to have to deal with all of those. But once it's vacated, it's vacated.
What say you, Mr. Lawyer? My question to you is, if we vacated it today, legally, they can still come back and apply for that because they built their homes or did their construction work during a period that it was in play. Is that correct? Or if we voted out, it's a done thing? And for those that were building during the period that it existed?
For somebody that's still in effect until. It's just like when a work, you pass a new ordinance, it doesn't go into effect immediately.
Right.
So it's just a publication process. So as far as, I don't have it in front of me to read, but as far as, but people still have to apply for it during that time period. Just because they qualify, they still got to apply for it.
Yeah. But is it retroactive or if we was to vote it down to say within 20 days?
If you voted it down today, it would still be in effect until, I think it was 20 days, I think.
After publication.
Yeah. So they could apply for it in 19 days, 23 hours. And in a month it goes published, that 20-day period, there's no offer there. But it's still in effect until they repeal. Yeah, you have orders of repeal. Though the repeal goes into effect, it's still on hold. But just because, for instance, if Larry starts building a new porch, he doesn't apply for it, you know, he's not going to get it. He's got to follow the ordinance as far as the application goes.
What about the argument posed tonight that they didn't know about previously?
It was in the newspaper after it became voted on, after the ordinance was voted on.
Yeah, I think that requires a little investigation on our part to see. As far as I know, is when they apply for the building permit, as far as it's supposed to be like in a packet, whoever applies for the building permit. Whoever's in charge of that, someone like John, probably, the mayor, needs to talk to see if that was done. If it wasn't done, that's going to just be a legal question I'll have to figure out as far as if it, if someone like the gentleman earlier, like, comes and says, I never knew about it. My builder never knew about it. I should get it. That just has to be something I have to research and think about.
Originally, I thought it was in a packet.
How did Hold Homes find out about it? Did they use that?
After the fact?
That was part of the discussion with Hold Homes when they were looking to build up there. And we were also looking to put this in place at the time. But today's question to our, that was going to be my same question to you, is that if the council were to. were to rescind the ordinance tonight, when I voted for it, it had nothing to do with income of the people that were building. It didn't have anything to do with areas of the town that would qualify for it. Simply that if somebody increased the value of their property by five thousand dollars or more, they would be eligible for this, this tax rebate. That was the only stipulation. You have to, have to build within after it goes into, into effect and then you're aware of the rebate. As a city, it's obvious we didn't live up to that. Dwayne isn't the only one who has said he's not aware that that was available to him at the time. So if, if these folks only have from the time that it's rescinded to when it's published, to apply for that, that rebate, that's not fair to them. To Bill's point, if we, it isn't gonna be a tweak. This is gonna be pretty much a whole rewrite of this ordinance. Because people have raised the question, should we identify cities within the, or areas within the city that would, this would apply to, applied in areas or whatever this would apply to? Should everybody get it? There's those discussions to have and figure out what the right one is. But if a complete repeal of it means those folks only have nineteen days that qualify for it now, that's not gonna happen. All of those folks that have an opportunity to, that in my opinion currently qualify for this, are we gonna have nineteen days, let the city know? And we're gonna miss somebody if we repeal the ordinance rather than do a complete rewrite of it. At least if it's in place, even though it's a bad ordinance, we can fix it.
We've got a motion on the table.
And Garland, could you clarify the understanding that if the city determines those that would have been eligible for building permits issued during the time the ordinance was effective will always be eligible, whether or not we repeal this ordinance or not? Could we clarify that?
Yeah, as far as, so as far as like what Missy just said, so I'll go back to Larry. Larry builds something tomorrow and he's built it in the time period the ordinance is in effect. Now, I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, I can't remember exactly the application process. But he's built it in the time that the ordinance is in effect, he should be able, all about it.
Even if we repeal the ordinance tonight? Because he built during the time the old one was in effect?
Like I said, in my opinion, yes. As far as, so we repeal the ordinance and as far as people going back, and like I was saying, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, I can't remember exactly the application process. Say if it's somebody, when was the ordinance passed originally?
Twenty eighteen, March twenty eighteen.
Okay, I'll go, say, June two thousand eighteen, if someone built then and now they're trying to do it two years later, I don't know. Without reading the ordinance and really thinking about it, that, that long a time period? I don't know. Not off the top of my head.
But does, what, does that answer, hinge on whether or not we repealed this one tonight? Or is that, is that answer-
That's it. That would be a question whether it's in effect or not in effect. If someone, for instance, from that two thousand nineteen time period says now, "I don't know about it, I wanna apply for it," that's something I'll have to research and think about. My advice personally is to table it because it's easier to replace the old ordinance, rewrite or replace it. Even in effect, we've rewritten whole ordinances before, as far as just, you know, ordinance five. We made, we passed an ordinance that restates, can't remember exact terminology we used, but restates, reaffirms ordinance five. We could say that to replace the old, but keep it. As far as effective, you know, it changes, say we figure it out by Juden Burke, well, this ordinance will stay in effect, it'd still be the proper ordinance up to, and then it's replaced Juden Burke. That's my advice. Because if, if, if council wants to table it, if that's their consensus, I would table it, leave it for replacement, but-
Who would be rewriting this?
Public Works.
Yes.
Would, would the planning and zoning- It came out of planning and zoning, didn't it?
No, it came out of Public Works.
I have one more comment. I think one of the biggest important things that as far as like the current ordinance and the issue with homeowners not knowing about it is a little background investigation to see, you know, how that step was wrong. Or was it never, or just that that gentleman, his contractor got it and it was, I don't know, could've been one page saying he'd do this and he tossed it in the back of his truck and forgot about it. I mean, we might've did our due diligence as far as, you know, promoting it. That's something that has to be paid.
But we also have to treat it like they did not get the information, no matter what happened. So it's just not fair to those folks in the past. Again, I say let's table this. Rewrite it, bring it back to be revisited as a new, that's what it is, a new refund.
Do you have a motion to table?
Motion to second.
Well, did, did it made a motion to table, JR seconded?
Correct.
I'm happy.
All right. Any more comments, questions? All right, so the motion in front of the council is to table the second reading of ordinance twelve twenty-six. Correct?
Yes.
That's correct. All right, no more questions?
I've got one. Is there a packet that, that builders get when they apply to build a house? Like, that has all the paperwork in it? Could we look at that and see if there was paperwork in there at that time for that? Or?
Yes, to both of them. There is a packet that Scott gives to builders now. What that packet was at the time, I don't know.
But he might remember. And it might still be.
Okay. And, and I'm still a bit into Dwayne's point. He had a contractor build the property for him. But he's the property owner, he's the one that revised it, so tied it to him. If he didn't know.
We have a hand up in the audience.
I didn't understand any of that.
Yeah?
We have a hand up in the audience?
Someone who wants to speak to us?
Yeah.
Can you come down, please?
Yeah.
Please state your name, address.
Name, I consider, mother.
Carahagan, five forty-nine Coburg Street, Hot Springs. I have personally applied for several permits. I have not received any notification since two thousand eighteen. So I haven't had contractors apply for this. I've applied for it. I haven't seen anything with any permits that I've applied for.
So you would've got your own package?
I would've got my own.
You'd read it, so there was nothing?
In the city hall.
Okay.
Nope.
Had you known, had you known, would you have applied for it?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, you still might not change.
Hope so. Thank you for considering it because it's a big incentive, I think, for people coming to town and improving properties. And, you know, we have a problem with that right now, especially in our downtown. So I would think that this would be a really valuable incentive for people to improve their properties.
I think, I think most of the population, most of us here agree with you on that. There's an incentive to help.
And the commercial one is that it's still good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Again, we have a motion and a second to table the second reading of ordinance twelve twenty-six. Any further questions? Mr. Smith, call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Yes.
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
No.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes. Ordinance B, second reading of ordinance twelve twenty-seven. Make a motion for that one, please.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twelve twenty-seven and ordinance amend and revising Title IX General Regulations, Chapter ninety-five, nuisance, ninety-five point zero three, nuisances prohibited, adding subsection B ten to add a nuisance description for uninhabitable structures and providing city code official authority to make the determination.
Second. Discussion? If you remember, this was a, a beefing up of this particular section. Garland had worked with Scott and the city to add some strength and language to the ordinance. Give us more power, more authority to manage these types of projects. Questions? Mr. Smith, you call the roll, please.
Dave Burris?
Yes.
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Our next, uh, ordinance item C is the second reading of ordinance twelve twenty-eight. I make a motion to pre- approve second reading ordinance twelve twenty-eight, ordinance establishing elected officials' code of conduct and process procedures for violations of said conduct to Title III Administration, Chapter thirty, General Regulations.
Second.
Discussion? Craig, you had some concerns with the language of rewording and adding one. Did you see that things got added?
Yes.
Okay, you're, you're okay with them?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Smith, you call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Yes.
Wes Grimes?
No.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Phil Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. On to new business, new business item F, a possible motion discussion to approve and adopt the updated personnel policies.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the updated personnel policies. Besides minor modifications made to wording, the significant changes include sections two dot two.
That's what I'm hoping for, I hope it's moved in, Mayor.
Say again?
That's the one you moved it to be two dot two three.
Yes.
Two dot two three. Sexual harassment, discrimination, added language, five point four, clarified callback pay for hourly employees, seven dot two, vacation leave changed accrued maximum to annual carryover. Maximum added authorization from Mayor to authorize overages and added proper planning requirement. Seven point three expands sick leave to immediate family and remove seven point nine. Seven dot eleven dot one, clarified pay to police department working on both actual and observed holiday.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. I tried to find it in here. On holiday, we pay time and a half, I guess-
Two times on holiday.
Okay, well, like the water, street utilities group, if they're working at night, do we pay any kind of differential? Do they have like a water break, anything like that?
They get time and a half for call-out pay.
Time and a half for call-out pay.
Even if it's not overnight.
In a minimum of two hours, can you call down on the price?
I, I found parts of it in here, but I couldn't. Okay.
I think they automatically get two hours, show up, if they were fifteen minutes.
Yep.
Any other questions? To Mr. Smith's comment about the two dot two sexual harassment, discrimination, added language. The added language is two dot twenty-three and it's not related to sexual harassment or discrimination. It's a section all on its own that identifies other unacceptable behavior that hadn't been identified anywhere else in the, in the personnel policy.
So that'd be two point three?
Two point two three.
It should be read, it's on the language.
It's on page twenty.
On page twenty.
Is that your rule?
No.
So it's a name everyone's having.
The bulk of the other changes are identifying supervisor department head, picking up some general language.
Two point two three.
Two three. That previously was not in the personnel policy. But the way that it's on the agenda makes it look like we had made a change to section two dot two. That's sexual harassment and discrimination, added language. It was language added, but not language added to sexual harassment or discrimination. It was language that was added to address other unacceptable behavior that hadn't been identified anywhere else in the policy. And then identifying how we're gonna handle annual leave in excess of two hundred and forty hours. The previous policy, employee could not accrue any more than two hundred and forty hours. We redefine that to employee cannot carry over more than two hundred and forty hours from here a year. So for about a year, they will still be able to have more than two hundred and forty hours on the books. They'll have to use that by the end of the year. They can't carry over more than two hundred and forty. And then John added some language that helps the employees understand how they need to apply for that leave to make sure that the city, that, that John can work the schedules amongst the departments, make sure the staff is available to do the job.
So if nobody's sick through the whole year, they can still take the leave at the end of the year? If they're not sick, just take their-
It's not a vacation for a vacation.
It's vacation pay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hall and Fair?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item B, possible motion discussion to approve the right of first refusal agreement for the sand gravel located at the entire leased premises at the airport. This is the agreement from Heathley and Sons. Regarding the lighting contract out there, it's a two-part agreement. It's a right of first refusal. And then it's the the exclusive use of the access to Heathley and Sons' lighting area. I'll make a motion to approve the right of first refusal agreement for the sand and gravel located on the entire, entire leased premises airport in the event of the city become, becomes the ordinary organs, the ability to sell the sand and gravel to a third party. And an exclusive abatement for a road. FR four one six E granted by the city to Heathley and Sons Incorporated. In exchange for the re, for the re-lease and the contract executed on two four sixteen and a waiver of any and all claims against the city with respect to the lease previously tabled from one nineteen twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. New business item C, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a five-year plan to lighting maintenance agreements.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the five-year plan lighting maintenance agreement with Lighting Maintenance Co., a division of Solar Sound Corp. at a monthly rate of seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Discussion? Yeah, just looking at the customer agrees to pay lighting maintenance company. And one of the lines there says default payment will render the charge of the entire non-expired term of disagreement due and payable forthwith. It's kind of heavy-handed, isn't it?
Uh, yep.
So I guess. Not that I'm not against it, I'm just curious why that would so heavy-handed now. Not that we wouldn't pay it, right? It just. Finance is very diligent about paying or not. Okay.
I got a question from John. You know, John, you told me one time Booth Electric was sure interested, maybe bidding on this, did they not send an RFP to us?
They will provide an RFP. They were called six times. They did not provide response.
So this was talked about at Public Works. Dave, Craig, thoughts?
Well, I don't, I know we added a lot of lights to it. That's why the price went up. And there's only ones that'll do it so far, so I kind of think we need to.
I had an agreement. I, I think the benefit of the extension to timelines. I, I would recommend it.
The current contract that the city has is for three hundred and sixteen lights. And John talked with the city crews and then identified sixty additional lights that a little light added to the contract, so to Craig's point. Yes, the cost of the contract has gone up in total. The individual cost per light didn't go up significantly. It's the sixty additional lights that were added to the contract that have raised it significantly. The original quote that they responded to was, I believe, a single year contract and it was at five hundred?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one a month for a single year. They, as part of their response, they offered a five-year contract. That reduced the cost down to seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. They'll clean and replace the, the bulbs initially. Clean the lights, replace the bulbs initially by March first is what they're indicating. And there's a five-year warranty on the lights.
Public Works ever looked at buying a bucket truck?
No, we never thought of the fact of buying a bucket truck.
You got one tall enough to reach through, it would have to.
But along with this contract, they are labeling and the police department and ma, and our city maintenance group. They'll be labeled, the lights will be labeled, so we will individually know which lights and all of the city will go by them. So it is an improvement for us and easier for a citizen. Anybody on, any of the crews that noticed that we have lights that are giving us a problem. All they have to do is give us the number. It's basically done. The police department will be utilizing that, like I said. Our city maintenance crew will be using it also, so that is an improvement for us. With the extension of it over time and with everybody working together to actually use the same kind of definitions, in this case numbering the poles. It, it will make things a lot easier for us to maintain. And a lot easier for us to transfer information of a problem pole. Referring to the light. Also, just so this, it, it states here number two, lighting maintenance company agrees to replace all ballistic lamps with new lamps on or about March first, as of today. And will guarantee these lamps for a period of sixty months. Now, these upgrades will actually help the city to save money on electrical. And with the added cleaning, supposed guarantee for sixty months, all these things in play really is a benefit to the city. So overall, I think we, this is one of the best agreements we can make for this particular situation.
Although the lettering and stuff's going to be a little extra, right?
Yes. Yes.
That's a one-time cost.
A one-time cost for that, yes.
John, did he get back with you about the cost for the decals?
No, he didn't.
So we were looking at maybe around two dollars per pole for the, to number them and the cost of the decal. I think we estimated around dollar tens. Yeah, dollar ten per pole plus the cost of the decals. We kind of looked at around two dollars. So we figured if we estimated around eight hundred dollars for a one-time cost to get all the poles numbered, that would certainly be a benefit to the street crews. Police department identifying what lights are on. So that would be an additional one-time cost to have that done above beyond the monthly cost of the contract.
And to the public, it's easier to find a number on a pole called city than to find lots of third ones. Wouldn't we do that ourselves? Ah? Wouldn't we do that ourselves?
We probably.
More personnel.
We could probably do that, but it doesn't really mean that lighting maintenance is going to, they have a program that they go by, so.
Yep, they're charging for each one too.
Yeah. But we would still have initial cost of maybe having the labels printed, pay somebody to go and put them on. So you're looking at basically the same thing, but not more of the cost.
Are those lights along the bypass like sixty foot high or something?
Yes.
So that's, takes special work to get that done.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to schedule a public hearing for March fifteenth at seven ten P M.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on March fifteenth at seven ten P M to hear comments on the proposed amendment to Title Fifteen lab usage, chapter one fifty-five. Zoning code one fifty-five point zero zero four. Uses permitted on review, adding subsection D daycare facilities. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item E, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. To mediate with Lon Corry.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement to mediate with Lon Corry. At a rate of three hundred and fifty per hour to be split equally among the parties. Corner Construction Corporation versus City of Modern Springs.
Second.
Discussion? This would be necessary if the city ends up entering into mediation with Corner Construction. To resolve the outstanding work that was done at the library. Looking at uh, three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Separate email from this gentleman, he said that he thought it would take him on a day. The cost would be split by both parties. So three hundred and fifty dollars per hour, that would be twenty-eight hundred dollars for a day. Half of our cost would be fourteen hundred dollars. This is what you'd be looking at approving if the mediation went a full day and no longer. Garland?
Yeah, I may know, it would also be some additional billing because we prepare documents for give to review, so maybe top of hour extra.
Fifteen, twenty bucks?
You got her old phone on?
You talking about my side? And I, I just wanted like, you know, it'd be, so he'd have time also for reviewing documents.
Are you hinting towards possibly longer to the date?
He was talking about.
It shouldn't take, the actual mediation where both parties meet and he mediates between us, shouldn't take longer than a day. It's just that for him to get up to his speed on what they're claiming and what we're defending. He'll have to, we, we will actually prepare what's called a mediation statement. Where we basically go to all their claims and say, nah, this should be denied because of this. And then he'll read that, so I figure it'll take two to three hours to go over that on his bill.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item F, a possible motion discussion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for C A S Inc. D V A winner's circle to be used at a wedding on October ninth of twenty-one. To be held at the Mueller Civic Center at eight oh one South Sixth Street.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item G, a possible motion discussion to approve travel training request for library director Donna Johnson.
I'll make a motion to approve travel training request for library director Donna Johnson to attend Carson Block Consulting Training in Cary, South Dakota, three twenty-four twenty-one to three twenty-five twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item H, a possible motion discussion to appoint council member J.R. Huddleston to represent the city.
I'll make, Steve, come this way.
I'll also, Steve.
I'll make a motion to appoint council member J.R. Huddleston to represent the city during the two thousand twenty-one consolidated board of equalization. Second.
Discussion? Bill represented us last time this came around. We haven't had a need to have somebody to replace Bill this year, and J.R., thank you for taking on the challenge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got Caitlin in? All right, so the motion passes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to appoint Mike Sumner to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Make a motion to appoint Mike Sumner to the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission for a three-year term, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. First committee report at Admin Finance. Caitlin?
Caitlin was absent, so I think Bill is going to be Caitlin tonight.
Bill's getting ready.
Bill sent you all in.
I wish. Okay, Admin Finance met today at one P M at the Mueller Center. President or Mayor Nelson, Deb, myself, Larry Pratt, John Gregory, and Misty. Under old business, there's no update on the auction of the surplus weapon. No update on the potential commercial tenant at the airport. For the council laptops, the potential tutorial use agreement is just about finished and screen freeze work should be completed tomorrow, so after that, the tutorials can begin. There's no update on the Fall River Highway Fuel System repairs and use agreement. You approved the vacation accrual verbiage in the personnel policy just a little bit ago. The city has the available liquor license valued at fifty thousand plus. It was pub, published in the notice to bidders once. A second notice will be in the paper on March fourth. We will open any bids for that on the March fifteenth council meeting. If there are no bidders, we'll just hold on to that license. Under new business, Misty covered the finance officer's report, which she'll be covering in detail in just a little bit. There was a request from the Baymont Hotel regarding a late fee charge because of bid tax collection fee. There was a twenty dollar late fee for two late payments. The committee recommends not waiving those late fees. Evans Plunge Mineral Springs is requesting a change to the head lifeguard position to a full-time benefited position. Currently, if that position would be approved, the budget would see an increase of about twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Eleven thousand two hundred of that would be for health insurance. The director believes that that can be managed through the existing budget. Since that, it would be a new position, a top of scale needs to be established. Admin Finance supports this position, but understands it will take diligence to work within the existing budget. And also understands that it may require additional appropriation of fund, to fund it. This position will be on, a request for this position will be on the March fifteenth agenda for council consideration. There were some charges in, in the claims this month of this meeting for clothing for the ACO. Currently, there's no line item for clothing for the ACO. Committee recommends that two hundred dollars be established to be consistent with the maintenance department. We talked about hanger lease agreements, the airfor, or the airforce, the airport advisory has established a subcommittee to start working on recommendations. For what the standard hanger lease agreement would look like. And we'll also be reviewing the state recommendations for such agreements. We talked about licensing fees for the daycare portion of the use on review. For the daycare license. For the daycare licensing, both the initial and renewals, we're recommending a fifty dollar initial and fifty dollar per year renewal fees, and we're basing that on the assumption that it will take about one to two hours of review work from the development coordinator to accomplish that work. We talked about changing the ordinance regarding appointed officials and moving the finance officer and the public works engineer from appointed officials and considering them employees as opposed to appointed officials. And this will require a revision to the ordinance. We found out that the services we receive from Black Hills Council of Local Governments is not free. And we received a bill for their annual, our annual membership of nineteen hundred and thirty dollars. Since that is an unbudgeted surprise, we will be requesting that that comes with contingency. Yeah. We also received new property value valuations from South Dakota. Help me, Misty, I.
Public Assurance Alliance.
Thank you, South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. We had an increase in property valuations, and therefore our premiums went up by about eighty four hundred dollars a year. They will also be increasing our valuations by about three percent a year to cover inflation. So overall, we pay about fifty five thousand dollars a year in premiums in that organization. John gave us a lot of good news today regarding necessary work on wastewater treatment facility. The best of the good news was electrical repairs, which could be done for about four thousand dollars. However, the digester lid and the clarifier sweep is going to be, and I'm just going to round off here, about five hundred thousand dollars. We're going to need to spend about twenty nine hundred and ninety five hundred dollars for a new gate on, in the wildlife exclusion fence of the airport. The airport manager has received three bids for that work. And we received a geotechnical report for the North River Street Extension. K L J Engineering has completed the bid for engineering services, and that is, bid was about twenty two thousand dollars. That is the extent of my notes for Admin Finance. Next meeting will be first Monday in April, one P M. So that's April fifth, one P M at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Bill?
Yes. Which liquor license is that?
Uh, that was the vault.
So one buckle pool hall, they've been closed down for a couple of years.
They, uh, we.
License goes back to the city of their dorm room for what, two years?
What's the old pool hall?
I don't have the.
Frankie's.
Frankie's Place is what I believe it is.
It's been closed for two years?
Pretty close.
Right.
Well, that's true.
They've continued to maintain their, their.
Yeah, but the license isn't used.
I believe they're still buying and we're still collecting liquor percentages, so I'll have to check on that. But it is two years, you are correct, unused. There's, yeah, it doesn't have to be up to full time, there's no, it's had to be used once in a year to be active, so. And not active for two years, twenty four months total. Don't check on that.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Bill. Airport Advisory Committee?
Okay. Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, February twenty fifth, A A M at the airport. Members present were Larry Vennerman, Ed Jensen, Petra Wilson, John O'Connell, Don Connor, and Shane Miller. City employees present were Ivan Venner and Tracy Bastian. Elected officials present were Mayor Nelson and myself. There's been no update on Advanced Aero Technologies. K L J has provided a project design schedule for the six-unit T-hangers. In February, we had forty-two flight operations and sold four hundred and eleven gallons of aviation fuel. We did discuss fuel prices since it appears that wholesale prices are increasing. Right now, we are still the lowest in the region, and we haven't seen other airports increase their aviation fuel prices, but we will continue to watch that in case we do have to increase our, our price in preparation for introducing the next load of fuel. We did establish a subcommittee to review hanger lease agreements. That subcommittee is Ivan Venner, Larry Vennerman, myself, and Kurt Burks. We're working on establishing a lease contract with South Dakota Department of Wildland Fire Division. Our intent is to use the agreement we have with that organization up at Butler Park and just revise it to to accommodate the, the area that they use at the airport. Shane Miller brought up the possibility of having another aviation fund day this year at the airport. They've agreed that they would like to host another one, and so June fifth will be the date for that. They also continue to discuss that, and this year when they have the balloon festival in, in August, they're going to try to have some activities during the daytime between morning and evening balloon activities. Meeting adjourned at nine twenty, and our next meeting will be Thursday, March twenty fifth, A A M at the airport.
Any questions for Bill?
What interest do you have for in between the, the morning show and the evening?
Typically, what they'll do is, what was real popular last year was the ping pong ball drop. Drop two or three hundred ping pong balls, let the kids chase them. Don't know if they'll do a flower drop this year, put a target out there and put the kids in the backseat of the plane and see how close they get. And some static events where the kids can go through, maybe get a flight simulator down. Just, as long as we've got folks out at the airport, give them something else to look at.
Conclusion of the, of the kids.
And, and really try to, working with, Ivan's doing a really good job of working with the entire aviation community, and so the fact that the balloon folks and the fixed wing folks are willing to, to do things together on the same day, that's a really great thing.
Anything else? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be March eleventh at seven P M at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Yes, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Mike Summer to the commission. And thanks, sincerely thank you for stepping up and joining, joining the cause. And our next meeting is this Wednesday, March third, five o'clock, at here at the Mueller Center.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Larry?
Next meeting will be March eighteenth, eighteenth at twelve, here at Evans Plunge.
Parks Recreation and Renovation, Wes?
My meeting will be Wednesday at three o'clock, here at the Mueller Center.
Planning zoning, Caitlin?
Our meeting was scheduled last Thursday, but we did not have enough members present, so we're having a substitute meeting tomorrow night at six P M at the Mueller Center.
Public Safety, Bill, J R?
Public Safety met Wednesday, February seventeenth, one P M here at the Mueller Center. Present were Mayor Nelson, J R, myself, Deb, Larry, John Gregory, Captain Winscott. We had seven members of the public. Captain Winscott provided police department update. Covid vaccinations have been offered to the police officers. The officers have made multiple responses to the school on a variety of issues. The two thousand nineteen Charger is down at the Shadrin dealership trying to find the starting issues. The new A C O has had many comments, compliments from the public regarding its job performance. Due to the state, statewide ammunition shortages, the state has pushed back the annual firearms qualification requirements. Our officers continue to stay very busy during the cold weather, and during the month of January, the department responded to three hundred and sixty-six calls. We had four members of the public were present to express their concern over the deer population and the damage they were creating to landscaping. We shared with them the information that Trenton Hathley with the South Dakota Game Fishing Parks had presented to us and committed to continue to improve the accuracy of the deer population surveys in order to allow for the best possible decisions regarding the necessity of deer harvest. J R shared his research from other communities regarding medical marijuana ordinances and enforcement challenges. We'll use this as reference material as we receive guidance from the South Dakota Legislature for our own organ, our own ordinance efforts. Tom Iverson, the new owner of the Skyline Motel, was present and provided the committee with an update on his efforts at the facility and how those efforts should positively impact the past concerns of the neighbors of the community. We want to thank Tom and Daniela for taking the time to inform and update the committee on their efforts as well as the physical and administrative efforts they are putting in place at the Skyline. The committee discussed, discussed options of personal panic alarms at the police department and city hall front desk for the security concerns that had been brought up last year. Under New Business, the committee reviewed the city attorney comments on chapter one fifty-five, point zero zero four revisions regarding daycare licensing and recommended that the proposed changes be placed in the information side of the council package for this meeting. Looking forward to a first reading of that ordinance change on March fifteenth. In other committee items, John brought up the possible need for mandatory food salvage ordinance that would allow businesses to donate safe, consumable, but near expiration dated food to selected organizations. We'll continue to research this issue. Meeting ended at two forty-five P M. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, March seventeenth, at one P M here at the Mueller Center.
J R?
Very good.
Any questions for J R, Bill? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Dave Gray?
Last public works meeting was February twenty-third, those present. Grant Erbner and John Gregory, Deborah Johnston, R C Scholl from R C S Construction, Chad Heinert from Heinert's Landscaping, Steve Wenya, and Rob Easton. One name I cannot make out, it's not my right. New Business? Discuss review after lawyers review contract term, termination documents on DLZ Mining and Airport. And moving forward with that as of this evening. We also review a discussion of R F P response, street light maintenance. And I emphasize, five-year contract opened at two sixteen. Discussed that, passed that tonight. Review and discussion of R F P response on the Welsh building demolition and salvaging sentimental contents. Also reviewed and had quite a discussion on wastewater plant, as Bill touched on also. Pretty, pretty quick meeting. Started at one P M and ended at three oh six. All this discussion and stuff was talking with those who put their bids in for demolition of Welsh building. And at this point in time, we're still reviewing it. Our next meeting will be March ninth, one P M here at the Mueller Center. Would you like to touch on anything?
Nope, you did.
Alright. Thank you.
Dave's comment that a two-hour meeting was quick. It was a quick meeting, considering how long they normally go. Any questions for Dave or Bill? Thank you, gentlemen.
Just for public information, normally, public works meetings are four to five hours.
Southern Hills Economic Development, J R?
No report, next meeting to be determined.
Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, we didn't have a meeting, but got two emails today from Kathy. Replacement golf carts will be arriving on Wednesday. That's exciting. And along with that, she's been working with the security folks to come up with new security measures to make sure the carts are watched much more closely in the future, and we don't have any more stolen. So no new scheduled meeting. I believe John will be giving an update on the clubhouse itself and the history reports. Finance Officer Reports, Misty?
Thank you. You did receive in your packets a memo along with the following financial reports through just the twenty-fourth of February. Due to timing, they don't reflect the entire month. You have the year-to-date profit loss summary report. For the first few months of the year, this report has a lot more red on it than most people typically like to see when reviewing financials. But we talked about that, we have a good plan. If anything stands out to you, or you have any specific questions, we're always available to answer them. The fund summary report, which shows you the spending and the revenue, our budget compared to actual, and that is broke down for you by fund. The cash balance report typically just include the, our main checking or Welsh cargo checking, but I did start to copy also our Bank of the West checking because there are about four million dollars in funds broke up between, between four different funds within the city at Bank of the West. So that's a new report you're getting in your monthly financials due to the significant balance. I also have investment reports by institution and by investment type, and this does include all the cash assets of the city. And then that does include a C D report, we have three CDs currently. Our work is continuing on the two thousand twenty annual report. I'm working with Cato to schedule the audit field work, which will begin shortly after the presentation of the annual report to the council, the first meeting in May. I'd like to mention my thanks to Laura Benson, Mary Hardy, and Karen Bingley in the finance office. They've been very helpful in coverage and also gathering and verifying information necessary for the compilation of the annual report. At this time, the items remaining include finalizing and recording two thousand twenty payables. This will be the last batch of payables you approve at the council meeting, I'm putting an end to it. Special assessment recaps include the addition of the twenty-sixth Street Water Distribution Improvement Assessment, capital asset additions and removals, as well as depreciation, booking and estimates, the S D R S proportionate share calculations for Gatsby sixty-eight, the count, and I talked about depreciation, and then the preparation of the annual report. In the finance office, we're anxiously awaiting to hear if there will be any changes or additional allocations within the parameters and guidelines established by the state related to the Unspent Cares Act funding. There was some new information shared on Friday regarding some funds set aside. There was some new information shared on Friday regarding some funds set aside in December in the President's Consolidated Appropriations Act in December of 2020. Division M of that act is the Coronavirus Responsability Supplemental Appropriation Act, they're calling that CRSA, C-R-R-S-A. Does provide approximately $2 billion in economic relief to airports, and we did find out that the funds allocated for South Dakota airports do include our airport and its $13,000. Similar to the other grant received from the Cares Act for our airport is 100% federal share. Does include reimbursement for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, sanitization, janitorial services, et cetera. We will be actively pursuing this grant funding available to our airport. Give you an update on 2021 municipal elections. Today is the day that you can begin circulating nominating petitions. If interested, those can be picked up at City Hall or printed out online at the South Dakota Secretary of State's website, that's sd.sos.gov/elections. The deadline for filing completed petitions is March 30th at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. I currently have four RSVPs for the 2021 SDML Virtual District Nine Meeting. Please let me know as soon as possible if you are interested in attending. This year, we'll hear from the SDML Board President, Debbie Hausman from Lake Andes, and receive the fund updates from Yvonne Taylor on the 2021 legislative session. There's an opportunity for a $100 gift card as a door prize. I think they're trying to encourage people to attend this new virtual format. It does start right away at 5:00 on Wednesday, March 31st, so please let me know if you're interested in attending so I can get you RSVP'd and the link sent out. On Saturday, February 20th, several of us attended the Legislative Cracker Barrel at the Mueller Center hosted by the Fall River County Herald-Star. The event was well-attended and moderated, so thank you for hosting that, we appreciated it. And give some updates on what's been introduced and where you can find more information regarding the legislative session on my memo to you. Give you an update on the rollout of, and the training for the time card software that was approved with the budget, and also some progress updates on our applicant interviews for the City Hall administrative positions. That's all we've got, thank you.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. City Administrator Report, John?
We've continued communications with DOT toward the highway reconstruction project. We got a copy of an email version of the engineers report for the Bodega Building, and we forwarded that on to Rivershawker, stating that the structural framing has been installed as adequate. ISG has also provided us a quote to consider for wayfinding signage for the consultant services involved with that. We'll be talking about that more as we move closer to construction. Our streets utilities and maintenance and parks departments have been busy. Utilities continue to, several responses to frozen pipes and meters. They installed 29 of the new Radio Reed water meters at those locations south of the bypass. The wastewater treatment plant annual biosalves report was submitted to DNR. DNR, Black Hills Energy required maintenance side of the wastewater treatment plant. We continue to get quotes for that. Those include the electric panel, digester lid, secondary clarifier suite that was discussed today at Admin Finance. Our streets and maintenance department have responded to two snow events since our last meeting. Our follow-ups on public notices and visibility issues, driver's line of sight notices were sent to 12 residents where we had line of sight issues in one section of town that will be addressed further. We got additional details and engineering quantity items for city utilities projects within the DOT letting that have to be submitted as part of a reconstruction will let in the package. And for Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse, we met with Rapid Foundation, who was a little bitter, it's approved at the last council meeting. That affair to establish their schedule of work, they're going to begin fixing the foundation issues the week of March 8th, and they expect to be complete on or about April 9th. Evans Plunge is currently in its maintenance shutdown, March 1st through 14th, with an overhaul of the Health Club area, which includes the hot tubs. This work is on schedule, and all the materials were received on time to get that rolling this morning. Economic development issues, Hope Homes has permitted two additional governor's homes on the Canton Avenue, Canton Avenue project, this will complete their work when these homes are installed. We're still receiving plans for the Dollar General that's going in on the north end of town. We received a revised entrance detail that is submitted to the DOT that looks acceptable, and will move forward with permitting that entrance. I've noticed that the stakes are in place now for the new structure. We got an opportunity to hear about a new multifamily housing project, it's a concept discussion on the east edge of the community. Advisers will hear more about that. And then we also heard about the improvements and renovations that are currently taking place at the Skyline Motel. It's getting nothing better, new ownership and work is being done. The Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan is finally at its point of coming forward to you for approval. I sent out copies of this current version to several of the council members to start looking over. This is different than comprehensive plans in the past, they used to be just chock full of engineering details and demographics. That change happened in 2016 when they went with a, the more open plan, it's, it's more of a marketing tool that explains what we do and promotes the city so we can get this out on our new website as that becomes, goes up and, and becomes available. Gives a good insight to what the city is, what we can do, and what our plans are for the future. Thank you.
Any questions for John? I don't have a mayor's report for you tonight, which takes us to our next item, executive session. And I get a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with SDCO 1, S25, S2, S3, legal.
Any discussion? All in favor? opposed? Motion passes, and there will not be action after the executive session. You see that ones on that side fell down? Come on, folks, it's cold in here. Have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.